Can I have a call to order? Can I have a roll call, please? Belsley.
Here.
Looneyard.
Here.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
You have a quorum. With us today is the American Legion. I'd like to ask Tom Skaggs to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have with us today Jim Vernon. Everyone wonders what they'll do when they're faced with the need to step in and protect somebody else. Jim Vernon's one of those people who knows what he'll do. When disaster threatened our children, 16 of them, Jim stepped up. He makes real light of what he did and he says, "Oh, it wasn't a big deal and I wasn't hurt." I happen to know he really was hurt and it was pretty serious. I wonder if the trustees would come up and help me honor him? Jim?
I'd like to present you with the feet of the city. The plaque reads, "Presented by the Village of Morton, to James O. Vernon, for heroism and defense of our children."
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored. I really am touched.
Thank you. Now, behind every man, there is a woman. And no honor else.
It is my pleasure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Those are lovely. Yes.
You've probably known for a long time that you have a special man here.
Oh, yeah. Or I wouldn't have married you. That was 49 years ago.
All right.
Forty-nine years ago.
Yeah, very nice.
I was very picky, actually.
Well, it was just recently that we learned what a special man he was. His strength and his composure and his bravery. And so, we're very grateful for his courage and for providence that he was in the right place at the right time. Thank you, Mr. Vernon.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Jim, before we ask you to say a few words, the Legion is here. I'd like to call on Tom Skaggs. Commander Short, can you come up?
We need another picture. We can actually...
Yeah. I'd also like to make a present pitch. Okay. Hang on. Here, you can have them stand. Come here. Why don't you guys stand right over here? Why don't you guys step up?
Okay. 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 Good.
It's a pleasure to meet a fellow comrade who saved lives. We've all done it or tried. Thank you very much. And I got a bad case of the sinus trouble, so I'm going to turn it over to my Americanism officer.
On behalf of the Morton American Legion, we'd like to recognize Mr. Vernon for his courage and his bravery. And this evening, we're presenting him with a Paid Up For Life membership to the Morton American Legion post. And also with this plaque, which reads, "The Morton American Legion Post 318 honors James Vernon for his effort in intervening in a knife attack on October 15th, 2015, to save 16 children. He put himself in harm's way to save everybody else. He is a true hero, Mr. Vernon. Nice job."
Jim, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
I'd like to thank everyone for this honor, or these honors, I should say. A little bit overwhelmed. I got a hug from the governor, but this is a lot better. And I'm glad that it came out that I was able to do something that I wouldn't have at first thought I could do. But sometimes, you've just got to grit your teeth and rise to the occasion. And I hope that other people in this country of ours will take that as an example. You may get hurt doing it, but I think it needs to be done. Thank you.
Do you think that was exciting? We're now going to hear from some accountants. Julie, would you introduce them?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have Jeff Bonnick, who's a partner with Clifton Larson Allen. And along with him is Adam Pully and Eric Aneal. And they did the legwork. And Jeff's going to tell us all about it.
Thank you. You always, I always have a tough act to follow. I forget what it was last year, but it was something tough last year, too. So, amazing. Thank you for everything you did. I'm going to present just a highlight of the audit that we did as of, for the Village's April 30th, 2015 financial statements. There were three documents that were issued in connection with that audit. And instead of going through the whole, all three documents, we put this PowerPoint presentation together. They'll just highlight the results of our audit. So, hopefully, everyone's got a copy of that. We're going to hit the highlights of the audit, talk a little bit about the audit areas of emphasis. There's a historical financial analysis, and then a closing. So, the results of our 2015 audit, we issued an unmodified audit opinion on the Village's financial statements. That's a unqualified or clean opinion. So, we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also issued an internal control letter. One minor matter that was noted, and this is a matter we've had in previous years. You place reliance on us to prepare the financial statements. In ideal system of internal controls, you would actually be preparing the financial statements. The AICPA is one who set that standard. They're looking for something probably similar to what a company like Caterpillar does, where Caterpillar actually has a bunch of accountants on staff who prepare the financial statements. You don't have a bunch of accountants. You have a very good one in Julie. But there is some reliance placed on Clifton Larson Allen to prepare the financial statements. And then, the other document that we issued was a letter to governance and has a bunch of standard language. If we had any problems conducting the audit, that's where we would tell you about it. We have a list of adjustments and past adjustments that are attached to that letter. But pretty much the same things we've had in the past, so nothing out of the ordinary. All right. Couple of new areas this year. This year, we implemented GASB 67, which expands the requirements for disclosing pension plans. As you know, you have the police pension plan and the fire pension plan. So, there was a fair amount of time spent looking at the new standards and working with the actuaries to get the required information in your financial statements. So, these financial statements are the first year that we had GASB 67. The other thing is there was a minor restatement related to a receivable for the motor fuel tax fund. There was $72,000 that should have been booked last year, fiscal year 14. It was caught by the village in fiscal year 15, so we made a correction to the beginning fund balance for that. Then, we get into our various financial information. First one is sales taxes. And you can see the general fund sales taxes increased by roughly $205,000 this past year. And the major components of that increase were the municipal sales tax and then tangible personal property tax. The next page, total revenues. Total revenues increased by 1.7 million. Mainly, there was $2 million of other revenue that was recognized for the sale of the old Farm and Fleet location. So, that's something that was purchased in fiscal year 14, sold in fiscal year 15. On the expenditure side, your total expenditures were down $400,000 from last year. Most of that was just due to less capital expenditures in fiscal year 15 compared to fiscal year 14. The general fund change in fund balance was roughly $1.3 million, a positive change in fund balance. There was some money that was transferred from the Fire and Paramedic Fund that went into the general fund, and that helped that increase in fund balance this year. The cash balance, the cash balance actually decreased a little bit this year. And part of that is the sale of the Farm and Fleet property was recorded with a note receivable. It wasn't cash. So, the increase in fund balance didn't flow through into the cash account. Next graph, the unassigned fund balance. That is roughly 50% of your annual expenditures. The reason we mention that is it's important to know how much you have in reserve due to sometimes the timing of receipts. So, the more you have in reserves, the more you can handle slow cash coming from the state. Utility funds. The utility funds' operating revenues were just under $10 million. Only the gas fund had a decrease of roughly $270,000. And that was due to less, actually, a warmer winter in this past fiscal year. Operating expenses, you can see those are fairly comparable to the prior year. And then, excuse me, the change in net position. The gas fund increased by 1.15 million. Water and sewer increased by 1.5 million. And then, the stormwater fund increased by $36,000. Cash in the utility funds, you can see the graphs, and it's up to just under $20 million at the end of the fiscal year. And then, we have the net position. Net position, you can see that continues to increase each year. All right. Any questions about any of the information?
Just a couple of comments. The citizens understand pension liability. So, how is our pension looking?
Your pension, pension is well-funded compared to most pensions that we see.
That was my, that was my question.
Yeah.
But I think the citizens need to know we're paying into that and it is taken care of.
Yeah. Let me see here if I can find out what the... You actually have a pension asset at the end of the year in the police pension plan. And... I'm sorry. Let's see here. The, it is well-funded. It's not fully funded, but in much better shape than most of the state pension plans.
Very few pensions are 100%, but they like to get them up to 60, 70, 80%.
Right.
Be well-funded.
And it is roughly 60% funded, but, which is pretty good from some of the other ones we've seen. I was at another government on Thursday, and fortunately, the government doesn't have to record the liability, but the number is very large and obviously, a big issue for the state right now.
But I just want the citizens to know.
Yeah.
We take care of that every year.
Yes.
Then, I also noticed the sales tax increase of $205,000 was the highest since '08. And then, the, I'd like to address the old Farm and Fleet building because it was mentioned on the cash account. But that old Farm and Fleet was sold with a 0% interest. So, the gentleman that bought it pays the village one payment every, I think, October, November, and then, we reimburse Farm and Fleet. So, it's just a transfer of money. But we actually made $30,000 on that 2.8, 2.1 million dollar transfer. So, the citizens need to know we made money on it, but we still are doing the banking.
Right.
Transfer once a year for the next 14 payments yet.
Right. I believe the way the terms work is you are paying the original seller, and then, at the same time, you're paying the original seller, the buyer is paying you, so...
Correct. It was transferable.
Yep. Kind of the intermediary, if you will.
And then, as a board, we've purchased some church property lately. And we also bought a house last year on Adams and Plum. The citizens see us spending money on different pieces of property. And in doing that, would you say our assets are fine and are, we're quite capable of handling those?
The, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, as you probably know. And the villages, the village trustees and president have been very good stewards of the resources of the village for as long as I've been coming to these meetings. And I think your, your fund balance shows that. You spend your money wisely and continue to invest in the infrastructure of the village.
Okay. Thank you. And I, just to notice, the utility fund did increase over $3 million. And the citizens probably wonder what we use that for, but that is used for a lot of infrastructure. And that's why when Morton, you see Morton torn apart downtown, everything is being paid for in cash. We're not borrowing any money to do all those improvements. So, that's all I have.
Yeah. The, we mentioned the net position, which is another term for net equity. But that, that's really the difference between your assets and your liabilities. And most of the assets are infrastructure. So, you just don't have debt associated with it. But it doesn't mean you have...
We've been driving around a lot of guard barrels and that barricades for a long time. And I think the citizens need to know we are paying for those improvements. They're paid for.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I understand that, you know, when, when you change CFOs, and we changed CFOs this year, there's typically a little gap, but the, your team was telling me there was no gap. It was seamless. Would that be a correct observation?
It was interesting. Going into the audit this year, we had our, the person who normally runs our audit was on maternity leave. So, Eric Aneal was brave enough to step up and, and run this audit. And Julie was new, so we were a little nervous going into the audit. But, you know, Julie and her team performed extremely well. They were a pleasure to work with. And I just want to thank Julie and her team for all their efforts. It went very smoothly. You know, we're, we're here a little bit later than I normally would like to. But most of the reasons for that were outside of our control and Julie's control. I was really waiting for actuaries to give us information for GASB 67.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next, I'd like to call on Brian Anderson. I would like to point out, there's probably people in town who aren't real sure who Brian is, but we were lucky enough to get him from Cleveland. He is a, an expert in economic development, and he is now running our economic development operations and the Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to all the trustees. I'm happy to be here this evening. As Mr. Mayor said, I've been here about 10 months or so now. So, it's encouraging to come to these meetings now, and I know all the faces and all the names. So, getting a chance to get to know everybody, you know, both in this room and then, other people in the community, and especially, our business community as well. So, from my understanding, this is the first time we've done a quarterly update like this. So, you know, bear with me a little bit and certainly, welcome feedback moving forward as we continue to do these on a quarterly basis. You know, more information, different information, whatever the case may be. You know, there's certain parameters that we try to follow as best we could, depending on the information available to us. You certainly, you have the reports in front of you here. And I'll kind of walk through a little bit of it and certainly, be more than happy to answer any questions as well. Just as a reminder, so, you know, everybody is on the same page here. The Morton EDC was established back in 2008 as a private nonprofit economic development organization. We are supported by our investors, which include businesses from both Morton throughout the entire region, as well as the village being a significant investor as well. We're tasked with a variety of different things, some of those being business expansion and retention, business recruitment, entrepreneurial support, downtown development, and community development. We operate under five-year campaigns. Right now, we're in the middle of our 2012 to 2016 campaign. It is our Make It Morton campaign. You'll see on your sheets there, we have three overarching goals that we do track on a yearly and over the course of the entire five-year program as well. Goal number one being job creation. During the course of the five years, our goal was to create 750 new jobs. Goal number two being a 10%, increase in commercial construction as measured by village permits. And goal number three, increase in retail tax income by 10% as measured by the state of Illinois. Looking at our commercial construction numbers in the third quarter. So, I'm going to go back and forth a little bit. We're going to talk a little bit year-to-date, as well as third quarter, and try to give you kind of both the breakdowns here. On the commercial construction side, we have 11.5 million in new commercial construction permits last quarter. I talked to Mr. Spangler a little bit. There is some additional investment that doesn't necessarily show up in the building permits right now when someone's doing a significant renovation or redevelopment. If they're not actually adding a new addition, but still investing a lot of money, those, those numbers don't always show up in strictly the building permits. So, our estimate right now, on top of the 11.5 million this last quarter, there's another 13 million that's going to show up on the property tax rolls once those values get added in as well. So, for the third quarter, we're estimating a total capital investment figure of about $24.5 million. There are several larger projects that are going into that. You have the new Casey's that's being constructed, the Jefferson Mixed-Use Project downtown, and the Miller Valentine Group 55 and over apartment community in the former Restmore property. Those are all three pretty big and significant projects that we're very excited about here in Morton. You'll see I have several charts in here as well. You'll see how we track our commercial property, commercial construction figures. We're at about 12.1, if we're going just by the permit so far, year-to-date. We did, during this campaign, set a goal of about $9.5 million. So, through the third quarter of this year, we are, we have exceeded that goal for the year, obviously, with another, another quarter here to go. On the job creation side, last quarter, we estimate our clients that we work directly with created 16 new jobs. Two of those are directly attributable to one of our microgrants that we gave to Autonomous Stuff. If you are not familiar with that company, I highly recommend taking a moment and, and looking into them a little bit. They are a very high-tech company based here in Morton. They're working with very large companies from across the country, Silicon Valley, major manufacturers. They do a variety of different things in terms of automation technology. So, some of your self-driving cars and other types of things along those lines. They work very much in depth with that. So, we're very happy that we have the microgrant program to be able to support companies like that. And certainly, that's the type of goal for, for a Morton in any community to be able to attract and support those high-growth type of companies moving forward. The other job creation numbers, those are, those fall under what I call non-public domain assistance. It's kind of a variety of different things that we do in order to connect them to resources and programs. And certainly, there's a confidentiality piece that we have to respect when we're talking to clients and businesses here locally along that front. So, year-to-date, you'll see on the graph as well, we're at 45 jobs created year-to-date. Obviously, that is a little bit below what we want to see year-to-year. Oftentimes, you'll see when you're talking about one specific village instead of a county or a region, you see some pretty big spikes. One project will put you way over one year. If you don't get that big project in any given year, you'll be a little bit under. So, overall, we've been trending right at that 150-goal. We're a little bit under. Hopefully, we'll pick up some more numbers here moving forward. But we have quite a few things, quite a few projects that are still in development that we're optimistic for, whether they happen fourth quarter this year or into 2016. On the sales tax side, it's always encouraging when the accountants reinforce what you're about to say as well in terms of sales tax. Obviously, that's been increasing kind of year-over-year. We're estimating about a 6% increase in 2015 in the sales tax. Third quarter was up over $30,000 from third quarter of 2014. A couple of notes on that, kind of from my perspective. I think you're probably seeing some additional sales tax activity due to some of the larger projects, like the new Farm and Fleet location being opened now a whole year. You'll continue to pick up probably some additional activity with the new Sam Lehman dealership as they've been able to expand as well. I will also say that, looking back now on the traffic count numbers with the big construction project at 155 and 74, that probably impacted our retail numbers for quite a few years, looking at it, where we took a dip and went back up. And we've compared that to traffic counts for the intersection there. And you go back to 2012, 2013, we saw a 5% to 10% dip in traffic counts at that intersection during that time period. So, people were avoiding and finding ways around the construction during that time period. And before the construction project, we'd been seeing increases of 5% to 10% of traffic count. So, that's starting to reverse, and we expect that to see to go forward. That's important because if we talk about future development, the traffic counts really drive retail investment. And until those numbers come back and continue to grow, it's really hard to get some new retailers into that area. Certainly, we continue to talk to them, and there's been a lot of interest in that Cortland and North, North Morton area there. But I think some of the traffic count and construction gave some of them pause over the last couple of years. And now that they know that's starting to wrap up, they're, they're certainly going to continue to work with us on that front. A couple of other areas of note, kind of going over a summary of some of other activities this last quarter. This last quarter, we visited specifically with 16 different companies on business retention and expansion visits. I have the breakdown there kind of by industry, and we try to, try to do kind of a wide variety, really get a good snapshot of the local economy. So, we, we visited with two industrial companies, two, or, excuse me, four in the logistics distribution sector, seven retail, and three service providers. So, we continue to go out and try to identify and schedule as many visits as we can. To be honest, third quarters, maybe are slower, or is going to be a slower quarter for us visit-wise. We do have a little something called the Pumpkin Festival kind of wedged in the middle of this quarter, which, which will eat up a little bit of time. But that is something that, you know, we, we definitely push very hard. I think it's a great opportunity to learn both about the successes and things that we can do to support growth and also identify any challenges that companies may be having. And I think that's particularly true. Obviously, you know, we're all aware of what we've seen in the news lately, you know, with Caterpillar and their restructuring. Obviously, that'll have an impact on our facility here in Morton, as well as we have quite a few suppliers and people in their supply chain. So, it'll be important for us to continue to push on this and, and really try to do our best to support all of the local companies that are going to be impacted one way or another as that continues to evolve here over the next few years. On the business attraction side, we really work with a, quite a variety of different people and stakeholders to attract new investment to Morton, whether it be site selectors, real estate brokers, and some individual companies that we work with, to really see what are the good opportunities out there, what, what makes sense here for Morton. Last quarter, we had one site visit by a company, an out-of-state company looking to establish their first location here in Illinois. It was a very positive visit overall. You know, I think they're still going through some, some of their due diligence here. And, you know, they haven't made a decision one way or another and kind of left that timetable open. So, we stay in communications on that front. We did have another site, site visit this last quarter as well for a potential project. And we're waiting for some additional feedback on that front to see where that goes. You know, obviously, as some... You know, obviously, as some of these start to develop and we get into more conversations, it'll kind of cross over into more of that public domain conversation. We pull in different departments at the Village, as well as the trustees here as appropriate, and the mayor as well. We do also track our available properties here. We do put those on our website. Our website also feeds into the state's database in terms of when we track our properties. So anybody searching the state of Illinois has access to our properties as well when they do a search. You know, we do have a handful of properties that we are really trying to be aggressive on, those being the former Hardee's property right off of 74, the former Star Transport facility, the Field Shopping Center, and the former Sam Lehman dealership on Detroit. I think all of those have unique opportunities. Some have some challenges as well, but those are potentially opportunities for us to drive some new investment here to town as well. Also, in terms of business attraction, I did attend what's called the Industrial Asset Management Council this fall, which is a conference of corporate site selectors. There's about 300 or 400 of the biggest corporate site selectors in the country. It was a great opportunity for me to get in front of them and also kind of introduce them to central Illinois and Morton as well. I will say it is somewhat interesting, you know, unfortunately, you know, we joke about some of the dysfunction of our fine state here in Illinois, but you know, things being what they are, quite a few people mentioned to me, I haven't seen anybody from Illinois come to this conference in five or 10 years. So it was refreshing to them that somebody had taken the initiative from the state of Illinois to get out there and start to interact with them as well. So there's a variety of leads that we're following up on. Additionally, I did make several connections with some of our larger companies that have facilities here, connecting with their corporate real estate folks, which is always a challenge when, you know, you don't have the corporate headquarters, is making those corporate office connections. So that was a positive for us to be able to strengthen those relationships with several of our companies here locally. Additionally, we do work with the Greater Peoria EDC, and we do work with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. They often will bring projects and leads that we will supply information and property information in regards to and compete for those. So far this year, a couple of other quick areas. Our Micro Grant Program, we've awarded one grant to date. That was the Autonomous Stuff Project I talked about. We do have a number in the pipeline that we're looking to get approved here in the next week or two. I think that program, in addition to the Village's facade grant program, I think have really done a great job to help encourage and attract some of that entrepreneurial and small business investment and encourage people to start up businesses or continue to invest in their small business here in town. I think it's a great dynamic between the two. Obviously, the facade grant program is more focused on the physical external structure of the building. Our Micro Grant Program that the EDC runs is a little bit more open-ended for a variety of different uses, but they really do complement each other very well. Also, on the entrepreneurial activity side, we have been in contact and continue to work with. Last quarter, we had, excuse me, contacts from seven individuals looking to start new businesses and potentially locate them here in Morton. You know, obviously, you know, you're not going to convert all of those when you're dealing with potential startups and entrepreneurs, but we continue to work with them kind of on a case-by-case basis, looking at the different resources, whether it's through an SBDC, through a Bradley, trying to connect them with financing or business plan help, whatever the case may be, helping them identify potential properties that would make sense for their business. So it really has been quite encouraging to me. I think there's a very strong sense of entrepreneurial spirit here in the community, especially in Morton. And for folks who are looking to start up a business, I think a lot of them see Morton for a variety of reasons, whether it be, you know, demographics and the quality of the community, they see it as a good place to really start up a business and look to invest as well. And finally, just a quick update. Obviously, I know that the Village continues to work on the Memorial Plaza side. From the EDC perspective, you know, just a quick update, we have secured $850,000 of the private sector funding to match the Village. Once the construction timeline is finalized, which I understand we're just about at that point, the EDC will be making a really strong push to raise that remaining $150,000 for that match as well. So we definitely are looking forward to getting that project moving and completed as we get into the end of 2015 and into 2016 as well. So that is the quick synopsis. So I'm more than happy to answer any other questions as best I could.
Before I call on the Board of Trustees for questions, I'd like to call on Sam here. He's our representative with your organization, and maybe he's got something to add to this.
No, just real quick, thank you, Brian. It's, you know, the numbers are not all that easy just to put together and to make sense of them. So I think you did a nice job in the summation of this. And it just, I'm happy with the continued growth that Brian. It's not easy coming into town with no connections and trying to establish those and work within the different organizations, whether it's the different boards that are, the different governmental boards, and then also the different local business leaders. So just looked at continuing, I look forward to continuing to support him in that effort and continuing to grow in that capacity.
Thanks, Sam. Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Brian, you were so clear. I'm sorry, Randy.
Thank you, Brian, for your update on that. And just had a question really pertaining to your business calls, retention calls that you did this past quarter. Can you share some takeaways, any common elements that you've seen or feedback that you've been given when you're meeting with the businesses that we could maybe benefit from the board perspective as helping our business community, any needs, opportunities?
You know, I think on a quarter-by-quarter basis, sometimes that's hard. I know at the end of the year, we sort of aggregate all of it. Sometimes we get a little bit of a clearer picture when we look at the entire year. You know, I think overall, and obviously, some of these visits were pre-the Caterpillar restructuring. So I guess we're going to need to continue to kind of keep in touch with a lot of those companies who are in that Caterpillar supply chain. But, you know, overall, the feedback has generally been very positive, especially in regards to Morton in return, you know, in terms of the infrastructure and doing business here in town. You know, every business will have, you know, kind of minor things. In a perfect world, they'd love to have, but there certainly wasn't anything that, you know, jumped out, you know, on the negative side. You know, and overall, I think they see it as a really strong place to do business. You know, depending upon, you know, it depends a little bit upon the industry sectors, you know, but overall, you know, some of them, whether we're talking about logistic distribution, they're also impacted by the construction at 74 and 155, so they're looking forward to that being done. But I think they see it as a great place to do business, but still, you know, still low cost at the same time. They do respect the feedback I've gotten from a lot of the businesses, you know, the measures that the Village has taken over the years to keep the taxes down here. Certainly, for the most part, our taxes, the tax burden here is certainly lower than many of our competitors here in the region. So they really see value in what they get on the municipal side.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just wanted to ask on the job creation and then retention. When you go on those retention visits, or do you monitor like any net loss of jobs? Or how do you keep track of, like if a business, you know, had to lay off someone or something? Is that part of the retention visit?
Yes.
Or how? Okay.
You know, and some of that gets, you know, that data gets better over time. We have started using, you know, for our own internal use, a proprietary software database system that allows us to input all this information from our visits. Then it also allows us to generate reports and track year-over-year as well. So this is really the first year we've fully been using it. So obviously, you know, some of the visits, we're able to tell when there's ups and there's downs. And certainly, there's always a little bit up, a little bit down, you know, depending on the companies. But that is something that we are trying to better track moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, thanks. I think everyone realizes that 90 days' data in this business is just a quick peek. But as the months and the years go by, we'll have, at least our group here will have a much better understanding of what's going on. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. I will now entertain any public comment. Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Sam, second. Any questions? Call it, please.
Belsley?
Yes.
Blunier?
Yes.
Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
I have no additional items. Village Clerk?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator?
I have one resolution that we were going to bring forth tonight, but after some discussion with some trustees, we need some additional clarification. It's in regards to changes to the building facade grant. So I will bring it, take it back to the Business District Commission at their meeting this next week and get further clarification, and we'll bring it back in two weeks at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Chief of Police?
Yes, Your Honor. I would move for a approval and mending of ordinance number 15-11, ordinance mending Title III, Chapter 9, Section 4 of the Morton Municipal Code. It's referenced by tenant merchant licenses. The change in this is when an tenant merchant's license is initially obtained, it's $100, and it's for three months' period. Right now, they can renew it up to three times a year, which gives them $50 each time they renew, which gives them a total of 12 months' period for $250 that they can operate a business. We sort of discovered this flaw this last summer during the time that the real intention of this is for a business to run during the summer time. So the change of this is to maintain the initial, but only allow no more than one renewal in a year. Again, that renewal would be three months. So some of the main things that we really see is some of the produce merchants that come out, and then some food vendors during the course of that time. But I said, we did have an issue this year with someone wanting to renew it those three times.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So this is for six months and $150 would be the maximum time?
Correct. Correct. It's sort of a disservice to our local business owners to allow somebody to pay $250 to operate a business year-round, so.
Any other questions?
Is it a calendar year, or is it like a year from the time that they got their first got a license? Like when their year is up?
It's during a 12-minute period.
Got it. Thank you.
Blunier?
Yes.
Yes. Herr?
Yes.
Herman?
Yes.
Kaufman?
Yes.
Belsley?
Yes.
Anything else, Chief?
No, Your Honor.
Carpet Council?
I have nothing.
Director of Fire and Emergency?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Public Works?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Planning and Zoning?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Belsley?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Trustee Blunier?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dove?
I have one inquiry. I got a very disturbed phone call right this late this afternoon, and I find it kind of ironic in light of the award we gave Mr. Vernon for preventing violence, that this subject saw on YouTube our mayor acting as the mayor promoting gun violence using a village facility. And they were very appalled as the taxpayer and the local businessman. And I wonder what that is. I don't know, I've never watched YouTube. In fact, I have trouble getting my emails. I'm not very computer literate, but I still have a flip phone. But if this businessman was that upset, he said he knows of several others he was speaking for. Is there any comment on that?
Mr. Blunier, would you like to comment?
I have no comment.
There was a movie shot over there that a college student put together, and it was done on a Saturday. I called the chief to tell him what was going on, so it'd be no mistake. But it was for a college project. It's about a three-minute movie. And I don't know that I'd characterize it as promoting violence, but I did indeed give permission for that to be done.
I do have a comment. That movie was made by a young producer who's trying to hone their skills in making movies, and it was more of a comedy than it was a violent film. And it was done on city property in the building upon the mayor's approval, but there were no village dollars spent in the production of that movie. It was just a location. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions regarding the film. And if anybody would like to see it, I'll give you the website to watch it.
Anything else, Tom?
No, no, I just see it as kind of a reckless conduct, because if myself, who carries as retired officer or any other off-duty officer had been going by when people were getting out of a vehicle with weapons in front of utility office, it could have been a tragic situation.
Again, the police chief was notified, not necessarily, he wasn't asked to approve the production of the movie, but he was notified that the movie was being produced.
I know when they do these in Chicago, they actually block off the street. They don't, you know, so private citizens can't interfere. In fact, the local junior college doesn't do live training out in public anymore because of the concealed carry.
That's correct. And we took all measures to make sure the public wasn't panicked, and I oversaw the whole production, and there have been no issues with it.
Trustee Herr?
Just one comment, not in regards to the movie, but there is, in the last three days, been a group that has been utilizing the Village property to obtain signatures for a petition that the school board has actually sanctioned in regard to working cash bonds. And I just want to iterate or, and communicate that this group that is using that public facility is in no way endorsed by this board because there is no official capacity. I understand from the Village Attorney that there is. We can't really stop these folks from being there to do that, but I do know that it was communicated by those individuals on, I guess, social media, that it was not only approved and endorsed by someone on the board. That was just frustrating to me because I know that we hadn't given permission in an official capacity. So I do want to make sure that it is very clear to the citizens that this board is in no way endorsing that petition and that it's going around in regards to the school board and the working cash bonds that they're trying to use for the improvements of the school district.
I think all the trustees would agree with that, wouldn't they? Trustee Herman?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Trustee Kaufman?
Just one item to remind everyone that we do have the 19th Annual Fall Yard Waste Program. It is open now out at the sewer plant on Fourth Street, and it opened October 24th, and it's open till November 15th. Then will be closed for two days, the 16th and 17th, and then will be open again from the 18th all the way to the 6th. So rationally, it is open till December 6th, but there will be two days it's closed, 16th and 17th. So it is on the TV screen, and please obey the rules so it can continue. We did bust a piece of equipment that costs approximately $70,000 out there a couple of years ago because of two bigger logs. So this program can be canceled if misused. The insurance happened to cover it, but it was a $70,000 mistake. So let's obey the rules and let's not ruin a good thing. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second by second.
All in favor?
Opposed?
Thank you.
[Music]
Thank you.
Thank you.